I'll forward to the regular meeting of the village of Lake Barrington's Board of Trustees. It is Wednesday, June 6, 2018. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Perkins?
Here.
Trustee Rigby? Trustee Shaller?
Here.
Trustee Thompson?
Here.
President Richardson?
Here, thank you. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Never get tired of saying that. You get tired of it when you begin this job. The first agenda item under number four is approval of the minutes from our meeting's last one. Number four A is the special committee of the whole meeting on May 1st. And number four B is the regular speaking of the Board of Trustees on May 1st. Are there comments, edits, questions, corrections for the clerk? There being the chair asks for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
By Trustee Shaller, may I please have a second?
Second.
By Trustee Mitchell, thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Chair would ask for an answer consent that the record remain open for five business days for the purposes of any subsequent administrative amendments that trustees may later exert. Under agenda item 5A, the President's remarks, a couple of things tonight that are really terrific to do. One, which I want to start is not on the President's remarks agenda. I want to just say what delightful and wonderful ceremony we had on Sunday dedicating the gazebo at the fire farm to Connie and Thomas Scottfield. I want to thank Jim Thompson and Karen Dalton Wang, an awful lot of hard work that made it especially nice. And Mother Nature cooperated with us, and that also assisted. And I know Connie's daughters and her son were screaming for these. And it was just, it was nice to have so many people together, including her family and folks here in the community who have known her. So Jim, thank you very much. Thank you. Agenda item 5A is the swearing in of Jay Nixon as the Chair of our Plan Commission. I met Jay Nixon in Suzie's living room. And it was through Suzie Perkins' friendship with Jay's wife Dawn that we became acquainted. And he had spoken to Andy Burke, and I would have thought that Andy would have told you the truth that when I say it takes no time at all, there's no demands, it's all right.
My back is right up on him.
Man, he did, I gotta tell you. This was done in the spirit of Misery Less Company.
Yeah.
So, we're thrilled, Jay, that you've chosen to assume this responsibility. It's very important for the community, it's a key role in our, in our local government. You bring a tremendous background. I'd like you to come forward. And while everybody here, I believe, knows you, we record these meetings for folks to watch. So tell us, by way of telling the community a little bit about your background and your family, and we welcome you and we're very grateful for this.
Sure. First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity, you know, in the chair position. I joined the Plan Commission back in October of 2015, so it's been very quick.
House members know what that means up here.
Yeah. I was looking back during the week to find out exactly when I started, and I was surprised that it's been, you know, that long ago, or that short. And, you know, we've gotten a lot accomplished. You know, I think, I have a technical background, right? So I worked in industry, I worked in healthcare industry with a background in operations engineering and quality. So I'm used to regulations, working in the regulatory industry. So I gravitate towards the technical aspects of the Plan Commission. I enjoy that part of it. You know, I look forward to what Lake Barrington has to do in the future with the new comp plan that we've worked on and, you know, put together for the village board to approve. You know, I think it's a, it's a great plan. You know, I think we've had recent changes on the commission, right? So I think we have a good blend right now of, you know, experience and new perspectives, which I think will be good. Currently, you know, I have my wife Dawn and two kids, seven-year-old Ethan and ten-year-old Haley. Haley just had her birthday yesterday. So we're enjoying the family life, you know, and we enjoy doing that at Lake Barrington. So I'm proud of that, as well, at Lake Barrington, and I go forward to, you know.
Chair, Ange, you've been a terrific addition and a great leader. None of us do this for any other reason than we want to try to make a difference. And your background and your temperament both make you especially well qualified for this. I would like to, at this time, recognize trustees for comments, and I'll start with the, with trustee Perkins, for any comments you would like to make about this.
Well, I have known Jay for, what, four years, more plus years? And, yeah, I'm very good friends with his wife, and she's a fantastic person, and, you know, so if she, if she's with him, she... Jay is a fantastic person, always very in control and knowledgeable about everything that's going on around him. He's a great, he's a great addition.
Any words you'd welcome, trustee Shaller, you'd like to add?
I have done that to Jay, and I've heard a lot about you, and I know the challenges of the Plan Commission. And we appreciate someone that's got a background that you have to lead us because we rely upon all the groundwork the Plan Commission does to bring us that information without us sitting up until 2:30 in the morning unless it's a development on the south end that happened a couple of years ago. But, you know, as, as everything moves forward, it's extremely important what comes before you, and if you investigate it and advise us. So appreciate what you're volunteering to do, and if we can be of any assistance, let us know. Thank you.
And typically, I would not put the administrator on the spot, ask her if they could comment like this, but she was Plan Commission Chairman here in Lake Barrington herself, before she had the later adventures on the board and now is an administrator. So I welcome any comments you might do.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of seeing Jay in action as interim chair a couple of times. And having been in your position in the past, I am just ecstatic and just, just very calm about the new Plan Commission chair. It's wonderful to have you.
Trustee Burke?
Hi, Jay, I feel somewhat responsible.
You're gonna be cursed off.
So it's been my pleasure, when we first got introduced, as part of really early on, the activities in the speedway. And I can say this, your battle tested, battle tried and true, is, you know, what you've gone through on Plan Commission and other things is pretty... When I said, oh, you know, they're lucky they meet every few months and get a little meaty something here and there, and then, you know, I really thought that was true, it's happened for the last two years. But, no, you're gonna do a great job. I appreciate that you're stepping up and volunteering, and Plan Commission and the village is in a better, better position for that. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Trustee Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jay, first, I'm glad you're married to a great woman. So, you know, your Plan Commission work has really been thoughtful and developmentally sound, and we want to thank you for that. It's been really good, thanks. As Chair, well, you're a leadership, you're thoughtful, and this is an important village committee, if you will report. And I think you're really well suited to it. Thank you for volunteering, step, everyone else takes a step back. Congratulations.
Thank you. Trustee Mitchell?
I would welcome you and thank you and reinforce that, that now you'll know, like the old Three Stooges joined the Farm Legion, that when they asked volunteers to step back. Exactly what happened. But thank you. I, I do believe the vitality is, is there, you know, with the Plan Commission, with the comp plan now, there's quite a bit that we can do and step up. And I think you're a good leader for that, so glad to have you on board.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna come down, and we will swear again.
I'll take pictures.
Okay.
We should have the motion, the motion numbers, the camera on the side.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, counsel. Chair would like a motion to, of the board to advise and consent to the appointment by the village president of Jay Nixon as chairman of the village of Lake Barrington Plan Commission for a term ending April 30th, 2022, and as chairman of the village of Lake Barrington Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending April 30th, 2022. May I have a vote? Seconded by trustee Mitchell, thank you. Vote, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rigby? Trustee Shaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, and for the record, I spoke with trustee Rigby over the weekend, and he would enthusiastically join the rest of his colleagues and advise on your appointment here. So I'll come down, bring my pen, so you can sign it as well. And I'll give you a copy so you can read along. If you'll please raise your right hand and swear, I, Jay Nixon?
I, Jay Nixon.
Having been appointed to the office of Plan Commission Chairperson?
Having been appointed to the office of Plan Commission Chairperson?
In the village of Lake Barrington?
In the village of Lake Barrington.
In the county of Lake Aforesead?
In the county of Lake Aforesead.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Plan Commission Chairperson?
Of the office of Plan Commission Chairperson.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
May I congratulate you?
Thank you.
Okay, and trustee Burke owes you an extensive...
President Richardson, if I, I took to just...
Absolutely.
...get postponed for one additional question?
Absolutely.
Did you attend today?
No.
I'm really thankful.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, check these things.
Yeah, no? I got a little piece of my sleeve here and a...
You tried to slip another one.
Okay. Chair would like to recognize trustee Shaller for the introduction of the Fire Chief of Barrington Countryside, John.
Thank you, President. I was surprised, I normally attend the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection Board meetings, which are on the third Monday of the month, commencing at 6:30 PM at the fire station number one, which is down in Pepper Park. Attend that, the Waukato Fire Protection District meetings too. But I was somewhat surprised after spending four days at the department, working on Incident Command Center training, that following the meeting, or coming to the meeting last, last month, Chief Ryer asked me to come forward and presented an award to me, but it really was to the entire village of Lake Barrington, an entire award. And I thought it extremely appropriate that the chief, Chief Jim Ryer, come to us and make that presentation to the entire board rather than me individually. So, Chief, we appreciate you, your department, very, very much, all the work that you, and all that you provide to the village. It's a, it's a great association, we got a great, a great department, great staff, and everything else, but speak.
Well, thank you for joining me here tonight. I'd like to attend more of these meetings, like trustee Shaller, Ten Zars, I have seven different villages that I serve, so if we're running around, I'll open them. As you may or may not know, Barrington Countryside was proud to host to be part of the national event for residential fire sprinklers. Thirty years ago, Long Grove was the first village in Illinois to pass an ordinance on residential fire sprinklers. There are now 104 communities in Illinois that have that ordinance, Barrington being one of them. As past president of the Illinois Fire Chiefs and now president of the Illinois Fire Safety Alliance, we're always looking at the safety of our residents and our communities. Part of the Safety Alliance, coming up in a couple of weeks, we have burn camp for kids, which we have about 65 kids that's here to open a camp. So we're always looking at the safety of our residents, and one of the things is residential sprinklers, and these represent all 104 communities throughout the state. This is, again, a national, national, national event. So I'd like to present President Richardson and the board with this plaque, Village of Lake Barrington, village president Kevin C. Richardson, trustees Andrew Burke, Christopher Mitchell, Suzie Perkins, Randall Rigby, John Shaller, Jim Thompson, village administrator Karen Dalton Wang, building administrator Erica Rizua, for following FEMA's America's Burning Report guidelines for the protection of citizens and FEMA's firefighter life safety summit recommendations for the protection of firefighters by adapting and preserving progressive residential fire sprinkler codes for single-family homes following NFBA's 13B standards. Thank you very much. You guys are just like us, we're here for the citizens, that's what we're here to serve, and we are here for their safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always, it's always nice to see trustee Shaller at our meetings. I don't see him once a week, because I know they're wrong, right? And those meetings usually don't go any more than thirty days.
Maybe show them off.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
We have a few other things on the agenda. I also want to recognize our videographer, Ellie Cruz. You know, she just had baby number three, and we are always thrilled to welcome a new soul into the world, and you do a nice job for us, like the compliments, you know, my dad lives at Lake Barrington Woods, and so a lot of folks there will watch our stuff.
Good. I saw it getting used, there are nips on there.
I think it's nice that unlike the staff on the Facebook pages that they do, you don't airbrush me out the way they do, so it's nice to be... And, and your new addition is doing well?
Yes, really good.
Congratulations.
Finally sleeping a little more. Testa.
Yeah, bring her to the village board meetings, I don't know. Just play him back at night, that's true. Congratulations. Okeydoke. We have a proclamation, and this is really as part of our support for not only veterans of Lake Barrington shores as an organization, but for all of our veterans, and it's regarding the Honor Guard's Day proclamation. It, I know two of our two vets who have done the Honor Day thing to Washington. One of the great sadnesses I have in life is my dad was not able to do that because of his dementia, but I know two other men of his generation that have done it, and there's a reason they're called the Greatest Generation. There's a reason. And the Honor Guard program, Honor Fight Program, is really terrific. So the mission of Honor Guards of America is to educate the general public about Honor Guards, preserve the history and tradition relating to Honor Guards, recognize all Honor Guards nationwide each year during Honor Guards Day, and provide assistance to them nationwide with or without, regardless of whether they have an Honor Guard even or not. The proclamation will proclaim July 1st, 2018, as Honor Guards Day in the village of Lake Barrington. The full, the full text is in your packets. Chair would like a motion to pass this proclamation.
So moved.
By trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Thompson, thank you both gentlemen. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rigby? Trustee Shaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, and I can again, with great certainty, say that if trustee Rigby were here, he would be voting for me for us, so. I'd like to ask Don Starino from the Fidelity Consulting Group to come up, and there's always such good news coming in Springfield. Before you, before you talk to us about that, to trustee Mitchell's earlier point, where did you go to college?
I did attend the University of North Carolina.
And where, where did all three of your brothers go to college?
They also went to the University of North Carolina. Order of the day, order of the day!
And where did your father go to college?
Me too went to the University of North Carolina.
Never forget, we are everywhere.
It's a twop, it's a twop!
That's right. When you said it earlier, I just thought, man, did you not read his bio? Yeah, trustee Burke had the same situation as your dad, all of his went to Indy as well. I understand that this is the first time we've passed a budget?
That is, well, since the governor Rauner became governor.
Yes. I talked a little bit about the process, why this year, what changed that permitted that, certainly some of the things we care about, that we work on for us, but also a cooperation with Baycock and the Illinois Municipal League, some of the highlights, and then I've got a few questions to throw out to you, but I also recognize the trustees for the question.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Yes, so I'll kind of start with the highlights. I guess one of them was this short-term rental bill, Senate Bill 1735, which was introduced by Senator Pam Althoff. And obviously, I've worked with President Richardson about that, and the importance it is to Barrington. So I reached out to the senator, reached out to local reps here, Senator, excuse me, Representative Sauer, Representative McSweeney, Senator Takachi, and expressed our concerns about that. And we were successful in killing that bill, so it died in committee, it never even got called for vote, to be honest. And I'm not sure, usually I like to say nothing's ever dead in Springfield, but, and this probably falls under that category as well, but Senator Althoff is retiring and not running, not seeking election again in November, so I'm not sure if somebody else will pick it up. Did not have many, if any, other co-sponsors, so it was truly just her initiative, and obviously, to a community like Lake Barrington, it was extremely important not to allow these short-term rentals. So I would say that that would be a highlight and a success for, for us.
Let me tout your horn on that a little bit, because I, I understand how this works. And she is a fabulous legislator, and we're gonna miss her down there because she brings up all, but she had a conviction around this. This is where people don't always get to see behind the curtain as to what folks like you do for folks like us. You cashed in credibility, integrity, in the sense that she trusted you to tell her the truth. You expressed those concerns, you described our circumstances and why we felt the way we did, and she could, she could hear it in a way because you had personal integrity and credibility that she knew. And that wouldn't happen necessarily in every instance where people didn't know folks or didn't have reason to really trust them. This is an attaboy, it's not gonna change your fees, but...
Well, thank you very much. It was definitely a team effort, but yes, you know, the sad thing about someone like Senator Althoff is you do work for so many years to develop this very close relationship and get this level of trust that when I do tell her something on behalf of my client, she listens to have her resign, or not resign, but not seek election, you know, you gotta start all over with a new person. But we're up to the challenge, that's what we're here for. So, but that was definitely a success, thank you very much, and we'll continue to monitor that issue, because I believe Lake Barrington has passed a ordinance regulating these short-term rentals. So again, we always, you know, from a global perspective, always monitor legislation that, you know, would affect Lake Barrington, especially the ordinances that have already passed, so.
I have a quick question. What was her conviction about that? Like, what, why was she so adamant about?
Yeah, I asked her, I said, you know, who's behind this, and she, you know, obviously, the Airbnb community was behind it, and not, and, you know, what, to the mayor's point, what I expressed to her is, you know, not all towns are alike. So I think that she was doing this on behalf of, you know, the city of Chicago and some of the issues that they had, and that they passed an ordinance that they consider the motto ordinance, and, you know, but what's good for a city of Chicago is not necessarily good for Lake Barrington, so, you know. But that, that's where it was coming from, to the best of my knowledge, from what her and our conversations got, got to her.
Thanks.
The other highlight or success was, to the president's point, there was a budget passed, and the main thing that, that I spoke to him about and to Karen Dalton Wang about was the local government distributor fund, or LGDF. As many of you remember, last year, the budget included a 10% reduction for LGDF, and so we worked very hard to, as Nick Sauer, who was a big advocate on this issue, with me, would say we restored 5%. I think a cynic may say that we could still long we cut 5%, but I'll stick with Nick, Representative Sauer. He and the entire House GOP caucus were really big advocates for communities like ours to restore that 5%, because that, that 5% means a lot to local governments like Barrington. So that was, that was a highlight, again, so there is a 5% reduction in fiscal budget 2018, 2019, but again, it's less than the 10% reduction that was in the previous year. So those would be the highlights of effectively, Barrington the most, I think. Happy to answer any questions to the president's earlier point about just globally. I'm not exactly sure what happens. As he knows, it's kind of the perfect storm in politics and the legislature. This is an election year, so technically, those years are a little more harmonious, because no one really wants to get too, you know, the prevailing thought was that the governor and the speaker were not going to allow the summer to go without a budget. So the leadership really did a great job, Jim Durkin, Senator, President Colleton, Senator Brady, and Speaker Madigan, with getting together with members of the governor's staff and coming up with a budget and just kind of hammering it out, and it really, it, the session went in like a lamb and out like a lamb. So we ended on time, and the budget was done pretty well. All happened on the last day, but still, it was really pretty harmonious. So I can only attribute it to your question that it was an election year, and because after three years of having no budget and not paying bills and all those other things, this really was a 1-80, so thankfully, I mean, it was really a much better place to be for, for the last eight weeks.
It's awfully early, but any thoughts about when I come up in veto session?
Yes, it is, it is early, and I would say, that's a great question, because traditionally, veto session has been very busy, because both Democrats, or Democrats control both chambers of the legislature, the Senate and the House, so they would pass a lot of things, the governor would veto it, and then there would be a significant amount of vetoes to deal with during the veto session. I, it's, it's way too early, because of most of the bills have just been sent, because we just adjourned, the General Assembly just adjourned, May 31st, so the governor has 60 days from the time that bills are sent to him. Now, he signed the budget bill instantly, and in years past, he had vetoed that instantly, so, but as of today, I checked this morning, I have not seen any vetoes. So again, it's a little bit early. The speaker of the House, Mike Madigan, runs a tight ship during veto session, he really only allows veto issues as opposed to new issues. So I would suspect it will be very interesting. The question is, is a good one, I'll, I'll tell you this, the veto calendar has come out, and it, the first day of veto session is November 13th. So that's important, because the election is, I shouldn't, don't quote me, November 5th, before November 13th. So there will be, you know, just, there'll be a natural amount of turnover, either because of election or there's people not running again, so you'll have some lame duck representatives in there, and it will be interesting to see how they handle that. In the past, the governor has done a very good job, specifically in the House, with Jim Durkin, of successfully... Jim Durkin successfully sustaining his vetoes. I believe he's like 83 and 2 or something like that in the veto department. So he's done a very, very good job of keeping those Republican caucuses together, and it will be interesting to see how that, if that maintains for the veto session.
You know, when I was a young lawyer, the Judiciary Committee in the US House, in the Reagan administration, Democrats controlled veto, but the US House by a large margin too. And that was the leverage, you had the presidential veto, and we could sustain most of those vetoes. And that's how you got things done, is they dealt with you upfront, because they didn't want to veto, and you got more out of the bill that was satisfying to both sides. Same dynamic. Happy to yield to trustees for questions. I'll start on my left with Trustee Mitchell.
Thank you so much for representing us down there. And I know that through Baycock and you as well, I think we have things covered. Baycock has been essential to keeping us up with the bills updated, and that we know immediately where things are, because, Don, so I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Very much.
Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you for all you're doing for the village. We really need someone like you there, your business, your firm. It's really great to see what you're doing for us, thank you.
Thank you.
And Trustee Burke.
No questions, just appreciate your support.
Happy to yield to Trustee Shaw.
Thank you, President. I agree, obviously, having a friendly face, working on behalf of the village of Lake Barrington is, and some of those, what he's doing is extremely important. Do you, even though with the turmoil and all that, do you foresee anything ahead that would impact local communities such as Lake Barrington?
Well, there was not a tax increase this year as there was last year. So a year ago, when I told you, there was, earlier than that, there was a tax increase passed. Again, that was another example, that was one of the two. The governor vetoed it, and that was, that veto was overturned, and the tax increase carried from 3.75 to 4.95. So obviously, taxes are important. I would say that, I think that next year, regardless of who the governor is, whether it's J.B. Crisk or Bruce Roner, I hope that there will be a capital bill, because I think the infrastructure is long overdue, and because of the rancor that's been going on in Springfield the last four years, neither side was willing to give the other side any wings, so to speak, and allow them to do ribbon cuttings. And so unfortunately, politics got in the way of, could be some really great projects. And so that would be a positive, I feel like, for Lake Barrington to hopefully get some of that money that would then allow the village to do some projects, as it has in the past when we've had capital.
Right.
We've had the fortune of to have capital bills.
Well, in fact, your firm got us $100,000 four, five, six years ago now, when there was a capital bill.
Correct. Yeah, we got some groundwater grants, you got some Tarkowski cleanup grants, so, and we still search for those while we're down there, but unfortunately, without a budget, there's no, you know, you've got to hurt this already, there's nothing appropriated, there's all these different like power and entry things. So now that we have a budget, it'll be much easier going forward to work with the administration to try to allocate some dollars. So that would be a positive. Other than that, you know, I think, you know, one of the highlights that I didn't touch on that is actually a big issue for Representative Sweeney is consolidation. And so that is an issue that we watch closely. He has been pushing consolidation. He specifically had a bill to eliminate Township Highway Commissioner's Office in McHenry County. The bill passed the House, it stalled in the Senate, so I think something like that will come back. There was a resolution passed. I tried to check, is Lake Barrington's population like 4,800 or...
49,000, 27,000.
Okay, so there's a resolution that would pass the Senate to lower the home rule requirement to 5,000 by population. So that would be something, and obviously, we have a census year coming up, and that translates politically to whoever controls the House Senate. Governor's Manchin will rewrite the map that draws the districts. But I, you know, one of the things, 5,000 could be important for municipality, obviously, that 25,000 is an old number, some would say it's arbitrary as to whether you're by hill, or by statute or not.
What is the status on redistricting?
So that will happen, again, that will happen after, so 2012, they'll do the census in 2010, or excuse me, 2020, sorry, worry about the old numbers. They'll do census in 2020, and they'll draw a new map in 2012. And the way it works is, Senate draws a map, House draws a map, usually because they're controlled by the state, that status quo maintains, they'll draw those maps, and then the governor can either sign it, it's like a bill, can either sign it and approve it, or he can veto it. And if he vetoes it, surprisingly enough, they flip a coin. So that is why the Republicans would tell you that the governor's office is important, is more important than normal in this election, because theoretically, the Speaker would draw his map, the Senate President would draw his map, those would be primarily beneficial to Democrats, and then the governor would veto it, and then at least you have a 50-50 chance of trying to get a new map. Now, there's a lot of other work being done on this, this Fair Map Coalition and things like that, that have yet to really get laid, but are starting to, so. So the status of the short-term is it will be done in 2012.
2020.
Yes.
2020. And the effort, and the effort to redo the way it's set up, the way it's established, that's still pending.
That is still pending. There, I believe there was an attempt to put it on the referendum on the ballot, and I think that failed, but I could be wrong. I haven't checked if what referendums will be on the November ballot lately.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Trustee Perkins.
No questions, but thank you very much, very interesting.
My pleasure.
Don, I want to thank you again, we can tell Brighton we miss seeing him, but I know you like to come up here, because your grandmother was a resident of Lake Barrington.
Yes, but unfortunately, on a sad note, she did pass away.
Oh, so sadly.
Yeah, so Trustee Shaw, she lived in Lake Barrington Shore, so she passed away in January of this year. So she was 92 years old, she had a really good life, so. Brighton real estate must be doing well, because they never even listed her place, somebody just came knocking and said, we want to buy it, so...
The market is hot in Lake Barrington.
Yeah.
Sorry about your loss, but we'll buy you.
Thank you. But the President, Trent, was always, was a great, obviously I love coming here, and I grew not far from here, but it was always great to go see her.
No score.
After, yeah, so.
Thank you, Don, very much.
My pleasure.
And go Irish.
Yeah.
This is them, Don.
Oh, no, no, Chris Mitchell opened that up tonight, I'm not taking the rap. He brought this up himself. Agenda Item 6 is the first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the board of non-agenda items. I see no one seeking recognition, so we can move to the consent agenda. Karen, I have to blow up my screen here. We have, thank you, we have a whole bunch of stuff on this. And I want to thank Trustee Burke for chairing the committee of the whole, as I was in transit from O'Hare up here just a little while ago. I understand all these issues were addressed in the committee of the whole. So under the agenda, under Agenda Item 7, we have 7B through G. A is to move the items under the consent agenda by omnibus vote, as set forth in the agenda. 7B is animal control. C is compensation ordinance. D is iron removal filter tank painting contract. E is resolution adopting periodic wage raise for the performance of construction of public works. F is small cell wireless facilities. And G is village hall parking lot resurfacing. Before I ask to move the motions in block, does any trustee seek recognition, just to make further comments or questions?
I did want to mention that the small cell ordinance is actually, what you have is in the package, is the earlier draft, the draft that the staff now has, is one that was updated on Monday to reflect the latest changes to that already, so that would be the one that we would want to be adopted.
And F, thank you, Chairman, Chair will have, will so acknowledge that for purposes of the record. It goes to your presentation, the trend, and John, this goes to your question. They will never stop trying to micromanage local governments. You can attribute a lot of motives to that, but they really don't, they really love mandates, and they really love trying to run these communities. And this is another good example. I think we're going to see a lot of argument about how municipal managers manage the money, how they can borrow, a variety of things, and that's why your work is so important for us, that we're a small voice, and you give us that amplification of that. That's great background, Jim, thank you for that. Are there questions for the village attorney on that before we proceed? Okay, the chair would like a motion to approve by omnibus vote. The Agenda Items 7B through G as described previously, may I have that motion in block? By Trustee Shaw, may I please have a second? Second, by Trustee Mitchell, thank you both gentlemen. Please call roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Ripley? Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President President President.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay. I'm trying to get across, and that's not working tonight. Agenda Item 8, the conceiving, as the treasurer's important, I'll ask the treasurer to please come forward. Mrs. Hirsch, you know I'm going to do this, where did you go to college?
I went to the University of Notre Dame.
You want to bring this up again?
And we're expecting a large contribution to the village of Lake Barrington.
That's right.
Keep us solvent, because otherwise, we can't do that.
We let Methodist in by our own system.
Oh.
I say that because I'm married. Chair is happy to recognize the treasurer.
Thank you. Before you, we have 12 months, ended April 30 of 2018, so we have a full fiscal year time to review, which is, which is kind of nice. I do want to stress, these are pre-audit numbers, I don't expect any audit adjustments, more auditors coming in next month, but you know, once in a while, we might come in, but Debbie and I do a great job going through here and doing the accruals, we feel unnecessary, so I do believe they are final. So anyways, we'll go through those. Looking at the flash report on page 2, you'll see we have assets of $2,410,000, and we have liabilities of $939,000. That plus our equity of $1,471,000 is equal to our assets of $2,410,000. So then we'll look at our revenue. Total revenue is $2,559,000, and total expenses at $237,000, for net income of $222,000. I'd like to stress how good that number is. When we budgeted last year, we budgeted to make $50,000, so we've surpassed that. And then sort of about three months with the fiscal year to go, we did an estimated actual, and we budgeted $149,000 of income. So either we're really bad at estimating, or we're just really good at managing expenses, I'd like to think it's the latter. But we also, we always try to be conservative when we give you our numbers, we try to underestimate revenue and overestimate expenses, because I think that's the prudent thing to do. But, so this is actually very good news, just want to point that out, that that's better than we expected. The flash report, then, we down below, we do itemize those one-time adjustment, those one-time structure items, we take those out. And for the fiscal year, the total was $18,838. So that compares our operations, our net income from regular operations this year is $241,000 compared to this point last year of $25,000. So as you see, we still outpaced last year, and once again, a reminder, we had a lot of, we had a huge number of unplanned one-time expenditures in February of 2017. That's all behind us now, so our comparatives for next year will be a lot clearer, I believe, going forward. I just wanted to point out one thing on this page 2, on these pages as well, your equity at $1,471, that's, that's pretty much equates to our bond balance. And I think it's important to point out now, at the end of the year, our fiscal policy, we had a target of $1,406. So when we did our budget last year, that target was $1,406, we're above target, so we're right on track with our fiscal plan, and it's kind of always good to look at that. We did have two years of losses the prior two years, so we've made a nice recovery, and it's sort of, it would be important to point out to you tonight.
Debbie, has that been mostly recovered on the income side or on the expense reduction?
I'd say expense reduction.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, although the building permit revenue is really higher this year as well. Okay, so let's flip forward to pages 10 and 11, we'll do our, look at our budget to actual So you'll see total revenue is at 101% of actual to budget, so we're slightly over budget. Our tax revenue is below budget, and our permits and licenses are way above budget, so we were able to pull that up. And just kind of following the income tax comment that was just brought up earlier about the LGDF, you'll see actually, your date income tax this year is $452,000 compared to last year at $468,000. So it's really just 3% less. I know the state's fiscal year is different than ours, I believe it's June, I believe it's June 30th, so that'll translate somewhat into the change in why. But also, you know, it's not necessarily 10% less of what we received in the prior year, it's 10% less of what they were giving out, of what they were collecting. So not necessarily a direct reduction of our income, it's just, and you know, does that mean that, you know, we have more individuals, individuals paying more income tax, possibly? You know, why there's more income tax this year, even though the state took a bigger share of it. You'll see that, yeah, the building permit revenue is at almost 140% of actual budget, and that's, we're really pulling up our numbers in these categories.
What building permits are those?
Mostly single family. Single family homes, yeah.
Yes.
And there's, there's some Speedway there as well, right this year, Erica? Yeah, there's some Speedway there this year as well. So I will, just a little note on sales tax as well, you'll see we're below budget, 85% national to budget. That's actually pretty good compared to the fact that Speedway opened up later than we expected. And I'm just going to mention, one time, I'm going to like worry the tears about how we recognize sales tax revenue, there's two different thoughts on that. So we recognize that the month the state vouchers it to us. So December sales at Speedway, like when you pay our sales tax at Speedway in December, that doesn't go to the state until January, the state doesn't voucher it to us until February. So that being said, in our revenues for fiscal year 2018, we have three months, we have December, January, February Speedway sales, but we're picking up in January, February, April, February, March, and April. So it's a little misleading if you're thinking, oh, we had five months of Speedway, we really only have three months in our financials. And it's just that we pick up other sales tax revenue, we need to be consistent.
How long do you think it'll be before you can get a sense of the consistent trend? Because three months is not enough data to really let you know when the consistent trend will be.
Well, we are getting returns each month from Speedway, and I think I noted in my report, I was going to mention, was this part of going forward, this is past month, consistently, we've 9% increase per day in sales, in gasoline sales have happened, each month. So January over December was 9% per day, I retired, February over January, March over February, and April over March, I did my months correctly. So it's been actually very encouraging. The last month was, was almost at what we were at our highest expectation, and that's only April. So the summer month should be very productive.
Excellent. That may simply reflect the change in gas prices, is that...
That's true, Jim.
I mean, I'd have to go back, and I don't really know, but gas, gas prices have been going up, I don't know at what rate.
Well, part of that was the switch from the winter plan to summer plan.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
It could be good if it were a combination of volume and pricing, it'd be nice if volume were moving up.
Yeah, I have to believe that those sales tax terms don't show like gallons, I think it's just dollars.
Right, we wouldn't really know, I mean, unless we're really tracking.
Well, we could go back and look at average sale, average gasoline per gallon price each month, and do kind of, it might be interesting, kind of, and I follow that.
So, I mean, in its odd way, I mean, if you recall, gasoline prices, when we were looking at Speedway, and they were under construction, and there were challenges, when gas prices really were bottoming out, and that was straining everybody's capital budget, if you recall, the low gas prices were putting Speedway in a jam, and they had to start prioritizing capital projects, because they didn't have the... capital projects because they didn't have the revenue generation. So higher gas prices hurts us all.
That's what I was saying.
It's odd that it actually aids us here in terms of.
I mean, you shake grease in the summer, don't they, as well?
And volume A and, the good, volume A and prices generally, just because of vacation travel, you know?
Right, well, that's a good point though. I'm only trying to follow up on that. I kind of get curious about that stuff, so we'll definitely take a look at it and figure that out. Let's see, where am I left off? Yes, that's pretty much, I was just going to comment on some of the revenue items and that was kind of one of the bigger ones. So let's turn to page 11 and we'll look at the expense side. You'll see we're at 94% actual budget, which means we kept expenses under, we budgeted for the most part. There's some, you know, some outliers. Let's see, so outside services, you'll see plan, review and inspections, those are a little bit higher, but those do track higher, a little bit higher with our building permits as well. So there's an offset to that. The payroll expense, those were kind of kept in line by other expenses, is obviously lower than budget and employee insurance kept that below budget. And then for total of other expenses, the sales tax rebate is much lower than we anticipated. So that's at 22% actual budget, so that, you know, helped to bring the 84%, you know, 100% down to 84%. So there's obviously gives and takes, but the important number is that we're 94% actual budget for total expenditures. And that's, you know, that improved the actual to budget number. So just another FYI, I had to keep throwing out these details out, but according to the Speedway rebate agreement, we pay that on an annual basis. And so we'll hold that for December and it's owed 90 days after we have proof they paid the state. We won't have proof we paid the state until probably a couple more weeks when we get the first try. They submit a report every four months to the village. And so that'll give me proof that they've paid to the state and then we'll give them, it's a relatively small amount, it's like $2,000 or so, but that'll be in the warrants when that's, when that is decided. We did accrue $9,869, the expense is down there, almost to the bottom there. That's what we owe them based on what we took in for revenue, but that way we'll pay paying them in a month or two. So there's a timing difference, eventually we'll get it all, just so I will point that out. So any questions on the general fund? I will turn to page 12 for the motor fuel tax fund. And there's cash in there of $305,000, that's what's in checking in our total current assets. See, $305,000. Now we still normally take in 10, you know, 9,000, $11,000 in month from that. This month it was $11,325. And so there's plenty in there to pay for the upcoming roadwork that's being, that's completed. I know we got a recent small payment request. That was just the first week of work, so it just started, okay. But if you'll note on this balance sheet, the fund balance is at $305,000, which equals the assets, so that's where that fund is at. Any questions on the motor fuel tax fund? I can turn to page 16 for the water sewer fund. We have net current assets in there of $1,448, almost $1,500, and you know, as we talk, we always need to leave something in there for repairs. These are expensive repairs when we have these in this fund, obviously. There's not too much to mention, that's kind of been cranking along, you'll see on page 19, I don't usually look at the budget too much on these, but since it's the end of the year. Our total revenue is 91% actual to budget, we estimate about $400,000 for building revenue. We actually took in $450,000. It's kind of a hard number to estimate, you know, you're estimating usage and all those kind of things. And then for the expenditure, it's only 53% actual to budget. The big number that wasn't spent was up in capital assets, $330,000 was not spent, that was the water tower painting and the aeration tanks, which is being done in fiscal year 19. So it's just been shifted a year. Any questions on the water sewer fund? Okay, I can turn to page 20 for the open space fund. So you'll see in the open space operating, it says operating checking, but that's actually, you know, that's only for capital improvements. There's $272,500 in that account and that recently jumped up, we received $153,000 on the recent sale of the Atlantis CFC. So that's now $272,000 in that account. There was really no other activity that was a major amount of activity, there was some legal expense, oh, the demolition farmhouse did come out this month as well, the expense came out, I believe the work was done in prior month. Any questions on the open space fund? Okay. Since it's end of the year and end of the quarter on page 24 and 25, we have the quarterly recap, we've done last quarter about the non-NFT expenses. You'll see on page 24, we have $23,850 was spent with Cuba Township and there's a listing of all the different items that were done, anywhere from color repair to ditch work, speed limits under replaced, but you, you know, it's pretty well detailed in those line items there is what was spent. And then the next amount, which is sub-toll, is $104,808,000 and that was just the monthly contract to Cuba Township. It should be 12 months of that contract in there. And then finally, the last amount, $4,010,00 was spent with Dorian Manscape and that was for plowing the Pepper Park walkway. Every time I listen, it looks like all the dates are detailed and for plowing and salt when it was done. Any questions on that recap?
I have a question, kind of tangentially, Julie, for Karen. I was looking through there and saw a number of repairs, like sea called repairs and color repairs, like Cuba Township somewhere in my neighborhood. Do they, as part of that cost, do they do the restoration of the, do they come back and do restoration of the disturbed ground?
Of the area that they were disturbed and putting in new color, they do. And so recently they've been doing things they did last fall, if it was done late enough in the fall where the grass wouldn't be.
So should they, I ask because those haven't been done in our neighborhood, I'm just wondering, will they be, will they be getting to those?
I'll take those addresses because they're pretty well caught up unless something else has happened. We recently had one where the owner wasn't in your neighborhood, but owner called and said, oh, they didn't repair the ditch and we went out and looked and it was, there was some pump that was running all the time and it was all the way into the ditch, so it wasn't tearing out the cement area place down. So I can get those addresses.
Okay.
Check that out.
Any further questions on that or good? Okay, so we'll move to the accounts payable. I do have, I want to ask to remove one of the requests from here for Speedway, there's on page 2 of warrant A, this request for Speedway of the $9,868.50, that was a little miscued between myself and Debbie, that's the amount I asked her to accrue, as an expense, but not to pay. So I'm asking to strike that from warrant A. That will change the total of warrant A to $184,439.75. In terms of anything else that sounded, that's unusual. Well, first of all, note there are notations by any item that's a fiscal year 2018 expense, sort of in the right column, it's just, you know, fiscal year 2018, a little bit of a highlight, that means that expense for fiscal year 2018, the rest of these would be for May 2019, or 2018 fiscal year 2019. That's the first comment I was going to make on that. And then the only other thing that's a little bit, you know, you're probably not used to seeing, there are six annual donations requested, I don't know if they're in order, yeah, hundred donations right at the end of general fund variable expenses. That's according to our ordinance 2017 O-11. Administrator Dalton Lane did follow the ordinance and request for donations and these donations totaled up to $5,250. And that'll be the one donation for this year for those. Don't use, I miss the book. And then warrant B has something not unusual, but there is a request for a small pay request for Geski for the initial work done for the Savannah footwork. Other than that, nothing really unusual. There's a salt bill for April, which might be unusual to most people, but we did have April snow, so followed by May showers. And that's all I have in my report and have any answered any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions for the treasurer?
And one last note, a lot of reckoning does come out during the teens to start field work, so for the audit.
Thank you, it's really terrific to see the recovery in progress.
Absolutely.
And I credit you and Debbie and Karen for an awful lot of hard work there and Randy's dedicated a lot of time, so there's a lot of thanks to be made to go around on this. I think we're in pretty good shape then.
Absolutely.
Now you shouldn't tell me that, you know I'm better.
Well, as you mentioned, yes, so our fiscal policy, seven months of reserve, GFOA recommends two. So your way out of what is recommended at the GFOA, but I don't think it's anything the state's committed, so oh my gosh, you have excessive on balance. But who knows with this.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments for the treasurer? Okay, then chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items A, A through C. A, approve the financial statements as of April 30, 2018. B, pay bills in the amount of, oh, thank you, $194,308.25 is listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated June 6, 2018. And C, pay bills in the amount of $46,083.16 as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated June 6, 2018. May I have a motion to approve and block?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Burke, seconded by trustee Thompson. Thank you both, gentlemen, McKirk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rigby? Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
And President Richardson?
Thank you, yes. You know, it's, I didn't get to recognize our acting clerk tonight, Erica, you're a good sport to do this, we appreciate you spending the evening and taking this responsibility. Thank you very much for that. The other thing I didn't notice under the president's remarks is today is D-Day. And here we honor World War II veterans and I didn't.
It's June 6?
Yep. And about 300,000 American, Canadian and British boys attacked by Normandy Beaches. Omaha and Utah were attacked by the Americans. Gold and sword by the Brits. The Canadians took, you know, the Canadians actually made the most inland game of ground the first day against the Germans. And of course, you've seen Saving Private Ryan or Bandit Brothers or any of that, our boys had a hell of a job that day on this. But sometime if you're feeling sad and you wanna about the state of things in the country, go online to YouTube and watch Ronald Reagan's address at Normandy on D-Day of 1984. And if you don't cry, you're not a human being. And so when we do this, I forgot to, I meant to mention that earlier before, God bless our veterans, God bless our veterans, especially today, this is 30. Okay, we can move to the administrator's report now. Guilt to the, Ms. Dalton Lane?
Sure, I have a few items of interest. Some of you may have been reading about China's recycling ban on imports to China and it's affecting the global recycling industry. A lot of our scraps and garbage or recycling materials are actually sent to China for processing and lose them in their manufacturing. They've set numerous higher levels of standards for, I'll say cleanliness, for lack of a better word, but the mix of plastics and glass and everything else we send over in scrap, scrap metals and everything else. So the waste haulers and swag are monitoring this because it could have an impact on us soon. I've talked to Michael, our waste management contact, and he is scheduled to come at our August meeting to give us an update on where it's at, so we'll see if there's any changes in the industry between now and then. Secondly, you may recall a while ago, Cuban Township Road District volunteered to remove some of the invasive buckthorn along Old Barrington Road. And a few weeks ago, I met with CFC who are treating this buckthorn so it doesn't re-sprout. But I wanted to share with you that in the fall, they're going to have some NATO's force and this is a direct result of the donation request and our donation policy. They said, hey, we don't want to just take a donation, we want to do something for you. I'm like, great, I've got a long list. But while they were out there after the buckthorn was cleared, they noticed some native woodland species, mayapple, trout lily, salmon and seal and wild dune. We're starting to sprout and grow out there after the buckthorn was removed. And that was, I think we're out there maybe three weeks later. So that was pretty awesome. Clark was out last Friday spraying the right of way for the ditches. And just a reminder to everybody out there in TV land, to change your bird bath water every two to three days at the latest and to treat any areas of standing water in your yard with mosquito dumps, which are available online or at Home Depot. This spraying is for the adult mosquitoes and the dumps are for their natural larva side, which kills mosquito larvae, so kills the eggs. Clark does treat some of our catch basins and we don't have that many compared to some other communities, but sometimes people have standing water in their backyard, for example, they can treat that. Pamed has notified us there'll be tree trimming along Northwest Highway within the next three months of their timeframe. They will be sending postcards to the adjacent property owners. I did forward the information to Citizens for Conservation because they are the recent owners of that portion of the Gibbs property on Northwest Highway so that they were aware of it. That's it.
Questions for the administrator? The waste management industry, not our, that industry group did a presentation last month at the Republican Mayor's Association National, in their connection on next Saturday this week at the US Conference of Mayors on this issue, problem Chinese are beginning to project. It's going to get expensive real quickly because what they're insisting upon is greater levels of sortation and greater levels of cleanliness, as you were saying. They won't take dirty scrap anymore the way they have in the past. And whether you want to link that to geopolitical things that are currently going on between America and China, it's reasonable to speculate, but the clear message from the industry was this isn't good and this could really begin to stain. There goes Ben Sorellos. Questions for the administrator? Then agenda items, the clerk's report.
Hi, I just have a couple of things. The open burning season just ended on May 31st after burning of small branches and leaves and it's only allowed between October 1st and May 31st each year. Also, today was the annual bolt pickup collection event for the village. Everything went relatively smoothly. We were involved a little bit, but everything went well. Garbage delayed in July due to the holiday, it will be picked up Thursday, July 5th instead of the 4th. And also, the Lake County Center for Independent Living, a nonprofit disability rights organization is teaming up with Lions Club, Illinois Foundation to host a vision and hearing screening event on July 11th from 9:00 until 3:00 PM at the Lake County office, 377 North Seymour Avenue in Mundeline. And the event flyer will be posted at Village Hall in the building board. If anybody needs any other information, we have it available.
Thank you. Questions for the clerk? Thank you. Agenda item 11 is there, it's the fourth of the standing phase, I'm sorry, 11A branding and communications, I'll do that together with D, external relations. And I'll take some of the thunder here away from trustee Thompson, who once again is putting wheel to the shoulder, shoulder to wheel rather. We're going to be working on these resident focus groups and he's already been drafting some of the things that, I've got some templates from, I want to share them to see if they're useful to you. And we might actually, I was thinking Jay Vixett is a good example of the kind of person, younger choice.
Yes.
And I know Suzie, you and Dave would be terrific for this too, more so with your role as residents than as community leaders. Why do people choose this community? Why do you want to raise a young child here? Those are the things that are good to do. So then we can go spend a whole bunch of money on things. I just feel like itchy if I don't do it. So I want to thank Jim for taking the lead on that and also commend you for. So, I wanna thank Jim for taking the lead on that and also commend you for the successful watching the farmers market.
Thank you.
You've been a busy, busy guy for us, and I wanna thank you for that. On External Relations, I'm leaving tomorrow morning to Boston for the U.S. Conference of Mayor Summer Meeting. As you all know, it's my practice, I do not invoice the village for my drought-related expenses, but I find these meetings helpful. One of the things, and I see that Deputy Stankworth stepped out, but the whole crisis around opioid addiction, and I know those meetings very faithfully now, we've had cases here, we're not doing tourism, and it's a catastrophe. And I'm trying to get a sense of how cities are doing this so that we can steal good ideas for free from our larger sisters and brothers around the country on this. You know, because it's more than just giving to the officers and the first responders and our camps, it's more than that. So that's one of them. I attend the Mayor's Water Council and I also attend a meeting there, and I also attend the Immigration Reform Task Force meeting. Those are the three I'm most consistently part of. So I will report back on it, but I, the Water Council, Don East, we don't have talked about, can we do some water grants at the year's capital? 11B, Community Relations. Jim, I still have some of your thunder, but happy Gil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted, one of the things I wanted to say was the Schofield gazebo dedication Sunday was just terrific. We had a lot of people there, the Schofield families are just wonderful, and there are many of the, many of the people from their families that said, I don't know if, maybe there were one or two that didn't, you know, that didn't, that weren't there for whatever reason, but it was a really enjoyable day. And the village minister, Karen Dalton-Lang, and I were able to take pictures. And what I thought I would do is I would do some albums for them, you know, so that they would have a visual memory of what they did that day. First Farmers Market was yesterday. I didn't see everyone out there. Next Tuesday, please show up. They have 20 vendors signed up. They had maybe 17 yesterday. They always, one interesting thing about it is that they had several vendors call about coming infrequently, and they're certainly open to that, so it looks like it's gonna be a very, very successful event for the village.
It'll be interesting to see how the Route 14 traffic comes.
Yes, yes. Well, one issue they had yesterday was that Route 14 is closed down by the library. So all that, a lot of that traffic... Right, a lot of that traffic was detoured.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, but still, they had, you know, some of the people said they thought it was a slow day, but maybe they were, some of them, you know, didn't have a lot of sales, but I was there several, a couple of hours, and when it started and when they ended, and there were still a lot of people there at 6 o'clock, so looking forward to that evening being even better was the roads reopened. Let's see. The producer, Karen Dalton-Lang, is working with an Eagle Scout on a Monarch Way Station for fire farming, and which is, you know, they're quite a distance, you know, from completing it, but I thought that when it's completed, we should work with Max Brad and his group to do some thoughtful environmental messaging for the area, which I think would really be a nice, nice thing to do. And as President Kevin Richardson said, we have some focus group things we're doing, and we'll be getting on with it. We hope to have one, at least one or two by the end of June. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. 11C, Economic Development. Trustee Burke?
Thank you, President Richardson. There's been a number of meetings between myself, Karen Dalton-Lang, Kathleen Scott from Scott Partners over the past month, continuing our discussions on economic development, focusing on prioritizing creating our economic development plan that stems from our comp plan, focusing on internal process improvements, and focusing on available, currently available commercial space and doing what we can to create interest in those spaces. We've set a goal for ourselves to have by next month, Kathleen Scott will be in, I think she intends to attend the committee, the whole meeting, correct, Karen? And so she will give her first quarterly update. I heard that she would be accountable for that. So she'll be bringing the quarterly update. Don't wanna steal any of that thunder. So it'll be quite a comprehensive update that she and Karen will be prepared to give. I will be traveling, will not be available, so they'll do a fine job without me. I don't know, Karen, if you have any updates on any internal process work that you're doing at this time, or you prefer to just wait till next month's report?
Yeah, we'll just wait.
Okay. So there's a lot of good work going on. There is not any real development in terms of some of the commercial property that's sitting out there available. I think the one thing that we have concluded over the past month, based on experience, talking with other villages, talking with folks in the industry, that it seems like a bit of a long shot that the corner, Pass Quazy property, they would be interested in that from a hotel chain. In other words, we got ourselves a bit excited about the prospect of that, but fear learning that we think what we have that attracts people for our villages is weekend activity, but not weekday activity. And if you can't fill 60 to 70% of those rooms on a daily basis, hotels aren't interested. So I think we could do well on weekends, but I think we can struggle during the week. We simply don't have really the commercial industrial business activity that warrants weekday stays, is kind of what it comes down to. Doesn't mean that we won't continue the opportunistic about it, but one thing I think that Karen and Kathleen are resolved was that we don't think it would be a good investment of the village's money to go commission a study to determine whether, and I think that's what it really came down to. We were trying to decide if it would be in our interest to spend money to conduct a study. So credit to Karen and Kathleen, they did a lot of work to say it doesn't look practical that this would work for us. If we went out and spent $10,000 or $15,000, which is what they are, we'd probably be throwing good money away. So Kathleen Scott is working with the broker at that site, continuing to look at alternative uses and doing everything we can as a village to make that attractive to people. And we have some ideas on that, but more to come on that front, and a much more comprehensive update next month.
Thank you. 11E, Finance. Chair Administration, Trustee Rigby is not with us this evening. Karen, is there anything that you'd like to report on? 11F, Open Spaces in Village Facilities, Trustee Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. We are still awaiting the sharp report from the consultants about our property. Everything seems to be going on very well. Thank you. I sort of almost say trustee Dalton-Lang. I can get confused about that. And one of the things that I think we sort of sometimes forget, as we talk about open space and facilities, is we look at what we have and then we look at what could be. And one of the things that people have expressed interest about is the ability to be able to come out and play basketball. And we started to have sort of a half court on the tennis court or anything else, but there's a, there's a real need for basketball courts. And speaking of basketball, since 1965, in 31 matchups between Duke and Notre Dame, Duke has come away victorious in 24 of those matches.
You spake us something awful.
The games that were played in facilities such as at Duke, at Cameron, Duke took eight and entered one of those. And South Bend, home court, which you would think with a home court advantage in facilities, Duke took five and Notre Dame only took four. And in the neutral sites where there's no home court advantage, such as tournaments and such, Duke took 10 and Notre Dame only took two. So please don't underestimate the importance of open space and facilities if people can play basketball. Thank you, Mr. President.
I had that coming. I asked for it. Talk about leaning with my chin.
You know, all I can say to those, we don't have any football fields here either.
I can cover football field, football engagements next month.
Thank you very much. The 11G is Public Safety and Gate Communities.
Thank you, Mr. President. Baycock had a mobile communication hubs planning meeting the other day at the American School District offices, and then followed up on the tabletop exercise that was done earlier this year, in which they talked about communication, what happens if public communication disappears in a major catastrophe. So someone had suggested that we ought to use school buses because all the school buses have radio equipment on them. But then I came down with in this meeting yesterday to say, well, do you need a school bus at every place that you, let's say, use the village all as one location in case of emergency, do you need a school bus out here? No, you need somebody with a radio. Well, they do have 200 vehicles that are owned by the American School District, or school bus transportation, not all of them are school buses, so they were looking at it that way. So I am continuing to investigate that. I'd like to ask Chief Prior to come back up for just a minute. I did participate in four days of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Friday, incident command, and maybe you could explain to this group what that means and what an expectation would be should there be an emergency and an incident command center set up, what the village needs to do with regards to that?
Well, the NIMS 3 and 400 that you attended is part of the National Incident Management System, where we all work together, and it's part of the training there, you know, to unify command and logistics and everything else that goes along with it. So if there was a big event, tornado or a big event that happened in our area, we all learn how to work together. We all learn how to document things so we can get paid back by the federal government. And we had a couple of tabletop exercises that a few of us have attended in the village of Barrington, and we all learned these lessons that instead of everybody doing their own thing in our silos, we all need to work together.
And how does an incident command center, how does that establish itself?
Well, it depends on the emergency. If it's an active shooter, the police would be kind of the head, incident command. If it's a big fire or tornado or something, probably be the fire department. If it has something to do with one of the villages, they would be the lead, but unified command brings people from all the different organizations together, and we all work together on those events. And we've been working with Shepherd Hospital, they're gonna wanna use our firehouse as an off-site EOC. So we're working with them. There's all these little things that can work together. If there wasn't an event, we would be working with you guys, you know. But it's all, so we're all on the same page for working together. There's many different things that are involved with it, but it's all about working together, most of it.
Since we don't have a police department or a fire department, what is required in incident command? And I guess the important thing, because the village's president is, has to authorize that. How does that take place?
Well, it's gotta go through the state and the governor's office.
But initially, what you're setting it up?
Well, we're initially setting it up to be communications of whatever the event is and where it happened. But if it happened in Lake Barrington, we would be contacting you, and one of you would be involved, probably the president, myself, or one of my chief officers, whatever police departments are stricken in, we would all sit down and work together. So again, it's communication, so you said earlier, we probably have to call the school bus. But a lot of things come out of those tabletop exercises, and that's why the NIMS, a lot of the people don't do it, but it is required by even village trustees and administrators to have that training.
And it is, it's interesting. It can be as big or as small. I know that the fire department has had recent activity. You set up an incident command system, you're kind of in charge of that, but that can expand depending upon how large an event would be.
Yep. Fire departments are very lucky. They've been doing it for years, so it's kind of what we do, working together. Police departments are trying to do it, but they work differently than fire departments. They're individuals, not saying they're doing anything wrong, but it's, it's working together. You know, when we have a big event recently, they had a big fire, we had 30 fire departments there, everybody knows what to do and everything takes place. We never ran out of water in a place where we only have hydrants. Everybody knows what to do and work together, and that's what this is working on, where if we do have an event, we'll be working with you guys too.
Interesting in support that we all realize that we don't, we don't have a public works department, we don't really have a fire department, we don't have a police department, we have Lake County Sheriff's Department, and yet, if something happens in this village, gotta be aware of what's going on and appreciate, I think, again, the service that's provided by the local fire departments, for example, Countryside, and what kind of Lake County Sheriff's Department and all that. We're fortunate, I think, that all of your members, for the whole support of the train, I guess, and all of this documentation, so you did money back from the federal government, so that's a part of it.
I've been trained in NIMS 100 and 200, and I've gone through all that documentation for the federal government, and it's something I hope I never have to do again. But yeah, I think because of, like what Trustee Sheller says, because of the size of our village and our, we don't have a public works department directly reporting to us, we would be opening that line of communication to, for example, Cuban Township for Public Works or Trees Down, and, you know, our fire departments, you know, for all kinds of things. So appreciate that.
It's great to work with you guys. Hopefully, we don't have a big event like that.
Yeah, I wrote an article in one of those mayor magazines that I get, and they said one of the natural, one of the disasters now they're beginning to plan for is cyber attacks. And what happens if somebody did something that jammed up all the communications for the hospital and for the first responders or something? It's just dreadful to think about.
And honestly, you know, we have a big hospital, we have big facilities here, anything can happen anywhere. We have some schools. If you look at cyber attacks, I mean, I worked for AT&amp;T for 30 years, and if one building goes down, but how it affects everybody when nobody's phones work, or the electricity goes out for a few days, what was it, eight, nine years ago, we had had a crash come through where people didn't have electricity for four or five days, people don't know what to do anymore. I mean, if you talk about terrorism, phones and electricity is terrorist, it is.
Our question's for Chief, for Trustee Sheller on this, because it's a good representation.
I just, I go, the bottom line is, I think we need to upgrade our emergency plan and incorporate emergency, so we're working with the administrator of that. I know we can get assistance from you in the department, hopefully progress with that, but appreciate it. Thank you very, very kindly. You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Speaking of the Barrington Countryside, they supported a new trustee, Matthew Howard. He's retired manufacturing executive. He fills the vacancy left by the retirement of former trustee Paul Heinz, who's been a member of that department since it became very good countryside. Before that, he was very much involved. Also attended, obviously, the Wakanda Fire District meeting. They have a, I got a tour of the new ambulance. They have a, rather than the ambulances where they're like freight liners, they're like a little truck, a heavy truck, this one's built more on a lighter frame, on a Ford frame, because of the ride, I think, is different. It's better, it's more stabilized, but it's amazing how the bells and whistles that they have now on their ambulances, like, oh, we don't have to ride one, we'll take them soon. Lake County Sheriff's Department, Deputy Stankwitz, anything to report right there?
Not really. It's been busy. It's definitely getting busier, but nothing crazy, he says for reports.
School's out.
Yeah.
Speaking of the Sheriff's Department, they expanded their Veterans Ambassador program. The sheriff brought announced expansion of the program, became fully operational on Veterans Day last year, to better address first response to veteran homelessness and veterans in need and in crisis. So I know he's been spearheading that and talked about that. There was a meeting finally among Alton Lake, our administrator, and Laura Nicolini from Lake Barrington Shores. There has been inquiry as to how the Lake County Sheriff's Department could assist in problems other than domestic within Lake Barrington Shores, and logistically, it's a challenge, let's put it that way, but at least there was some discussion, nothing...
Supposedly regarding the speeding.
Yeah. Matter of fact, we had a meeting last night, and the question... Matter of fact, we had a meeting last night and a question came up and I basically told the board at that time, if you're expecting the Sheriff's Department to take care of speeding in Lake Barrington Shores, that's a problem we need to resolve on our own. Because it's just not going to be something that, they, they really do need to address that as well. And as far as telegraph, I didn't get any report, but I did write through the council. There are a lot of new construction, a lot of building permits, a lot of foundations. It really looks encouraging. Erica, do you know about how many new pending there is about?
I have a few under review. There's two that we just gave COs on, there's three hundred construction. And there was about eight last year, roughly, I need to look.
Yeah, I guess so.
They're, they're anticipating at least two submittals a month for a while.
It's, it's very encouraging, I mean, right through and see other than Deer Room, you know, development. And the one you had way up at the north end, Overlook, the pen has been sold a mile, I think, next year or two. The one that's positive is complete.
Those are your participants, your focus groups?
They did introduce three more models too that were approved. So three different designs now, so there's nine total models.
Those are very, very good.
And all I have to say is about Lake Barrington Shores, there have been forty-nine sales year to date. And there are twenty-five more to track. So it's been a pretty good year as far as sales and LBS, so things are, things are good. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Trusty Schaller? Thank you, John. Eleven H, Rosen Construction, Trusty Perkins.
Okay, thank you very much. Savannah paving has been completed and they are just doing the striping on the edges of the new pavement and just some restoration to do Jason Rhodes.
It looks nice with the striping. It really is, it's great reading, first to do it, supports the reading. Further, are there questions for Trusty Perkins?
I've got one question. I know I probably ask this every time, but it's to Trusty Perkins or Karen about where we are in the cycle. So this is the, this is the second half of Savannah, right?
Correct.
So then cyclically, will there be money next year or will that be a recharge here for multiple fuel fund?
Next year, I think is a recharge year. We'll be doing probably some crack sealing and restoration stuff on pavement like the C R F and stuff. But in the following year, we'll be the next big program.
And have we figured out what that is yet?
We've got a couple of streets in mind based on the payment condition report. And what we'll do is we'll look at those like next year, you know, to see how fast or slow they're deteriorating.
Okay. I'm getting increased number of inquiries about roads in my neighborhood. They're, they're, they're beginning to fall apart.
Yeah, the big, is it Hill Farm? The big Hill Farm, that's up there, that's in the next couple of years.
We've got big chunks of pavement coming up now, so it's going to require at least some.
Some, some patching.
Significant patching, because those are safe, those are safety issues there.
We have some streets like Brookside that also need attention desperately, so we'll see what happens.
Just I'm getting the inquiries, I'm just trying to figure out how to.
If you see areas of pavement degradation like that would benefit from a patch, just let me know. I can go and take a look at it and then give keep the township the work order to patch it, you know.
Yeah, what's really happening there is most of this is happening on the shoulders because of the way the gravel.
Out here, yeah, correct.
The shoulders are so bad that, and we know that those roads were paved notoriously down on the edges. And so that's where the roads would be.
And what we'll do there.
Let us get hold of those, it's really nice.
What we did with Savannah is we actually narrowed the roads a little bit. Less payments, it's more economical for plowing. So what asks can go in each direction and I'll even get a stronger so please.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay, there is no old business we have under Gen item thirteen, ordinance is assigned variation. Who's setting this up, Karen or Jim?
I'll, I'll set it up. So the plan commission heard testimony at the main meeting and unanimously recommended approval for zoning variation to display two temporary banners along Northwest Highway side of, of the Angel Waters property for the Farmers Market event. And the plan commission was very clear that the experience was given because it was a community event sign. And also to speed along Northwest Highway at fifty-five miles per hour. Our current code for temporary sign would have meant ten square feet, two ten square feet times. Two ten square feet signs, which, you know, if you're flying by, you won't see. So this, along with their digital sign, hopefully is attracting people. And the, our code also says ninety days and it was for despite the over ninety days for the length of the Farmers Market. So that there's an ordinance to pass on that.
Are there questions for the administrator?
I just have one comment, Mr. President. That is that do some research on the Farmers Markets. One of the recommendations is that the primary roads, that they use banners and flags, you know, to call attention to the, to the Farmers Market on those roads. And so I think the banners will be a distinct assistance to the Farmers Market.
It's a, there's a real community benefit there. It's working, so it's not just some bowl, so it's good.
It also helps Angel Soft Water, and that's another good thing.
Are there questions further for the administrator of this or comments? All right, they're being done. Chair would like a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash oh dash thirteen. Thank you. As presented.
So.
Moved by Trusty Schaller, seconded by Trusty Mitchell. Right, Jim, right. Moved by Trusty Thompson, seconded by Trusty Schaller. Oh, you good-looking guys. Well, thank you.
It looked like farmers, yeah.
Parker, please call the board.
Trusty Burke?
Yes.
Trusty Mitchell?
Yes.
Trusty Perkins?
Yes.
Trusty Rippey? Trusty Schaller?
Yes.
Trusty Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson.
Can I just make one point of clarification? Can you check to see if that should be ordinance fourteen? Isn't that consent?
Chair would like unanimous consent, this is definitely an authority to make any necessary, I'm not relative to enumeration of ordinance.
So we have all controls.
Out objections, so we're good. Gen item fourteen, no resolutions, no new business?
New business, point of personal privilege, sir, just to update on Baycock.
All right, thank you.
If I might?
No, I don't.
No.
And pleased to report, thanks to some efforts of some integral village players, including our village president, that Deer Park has rejoined Baycock. They dropped out several years ago after with significant dues which helped support Baycock. Janet McLevy was very creative and industrious and the board decided to go after some sponsors, which helped cover the, when that falls, so Deer Park, Deer Park is now back. We had them at the last meeting and it is a delight. They are very excited and looking forward to being full participants in Baycock's, that's good news. Baycock's budget, our finance committee approved that. And I wasn't sure if it was going to come in written form, Ken, for the budget, the Baycock budget. I couldn't see it. It's not, it's an attachment.
I thought she mailed them, she emailed them out.
Different batch.
Not to everybody, no.
Just to?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I just want to mention, well, the budget being approved is a little bit less than the previous year, partly through some staff transitions and a few things. But this includes the hour due, so to speak, that go to support Baycock for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. Salary and operations is twenty-five thousand and forty-six dollars. Two-five, zero, four, six. As opposed to last year was twenty-five, three, forty-one, so it went down just a little bit because of those changes. The groundwater monitoring portion that we are responsible for is seventeen, seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Proposed total is twenty-six thousand, seven, sixty-three, down two hundred and twenty dollars from last year by having Deer Park and just a few changes. And for those of you who haven't spent time looking into stuff, serving on the finance committee, the Baycock budget is tighter than.
Lean.
It is incredibly lean and we spend probably more than necessary, but we spend time arguing over two hundred or a hundred and fifty-six dollars and can we afford this and what can we do to get it for less and do it for less, et cetera. So that gives Baycock their proposed total budget for next year of two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which is split among the trustees, the trustees, so I'll be looking for a check for all of them. Along the tax ships and the villages. That's apportioned out, so I just, I wanted to give that for you. And as I said, it's, it's sixteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars less than last year total, but that's tight. So, and thank you for that.
No, you know, you spend a lot of time on our behalf. It's an important organization, they do important work for the region. And I want to thank you for what has been an awful lot of effort.
Well, my pleasure. I think it's worth it because not only the benefit of the board, but the finance committee and then the legislative committee as well. And we are at such an advantage as a small village by having, by being a part of Baycock. Legislative tracker, you want to know the status of any bill, go online or call Janet, get a copy of that, and it will tell you where it is that day in any committee.
You know, the nice combination is when fidelity brings to us this political reach within Springfield, outside of our region, they have friends in the legislature from all over the state, so they can, they can communicate our, our concerns to people beyond our constituents. Nick Sauer, you're extremely, and Dan McCaughy. And that's very valuable. Janet kind of matches it with the policy expertise.
Yeah, and the, the local effect. I mean, we got an action alert last week before the end of the, the year when the budget was about to go in to say, do what you can, there, there's potential of cutting more with LGD, LGD debt. And it didn't happen, but it's sort of boots on the ground. That's different, but complimentary to what Don's doing and the fidelity we bring with. So it's really been helpful to see that firsthand.
More voices in the voice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Gen item sixteen, the second opportunity for the public to address the board, senior one. And we have no need for a closed session, right? My favorite motion, the chair would like a motion to a chair.
Second.
Okay, all those are favored.